We have is Randy and I'm sure he's going to be brought in at his point. PM, Council and all of our guests, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United.
States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let's go ahead and start off with our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. Kara, I see you're on there. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and you can give us any updates or. Or Omar or whoever is going to be doing the update tonight.
Well, perfect. Well, Mayor, Mayor and Town Council, thanks for, for having us tonight. It's nice to see everybody under different circumstances. So. Always a pleasure to be here, but just wanted to take a couple of minutes and just. You have some of the exciting things we got going on at the Parker Chamber under, under regular circumstances. I'd be up there telling you of how many days there is left to Parker Days, which would be 11 days. Unfortunately, no, we did make that decision back in April to, to cancel Parker Days for 2021 and it was a. Hard decision, but an easy decision. You know, the citizens of Parker deserve the best and they should get the best and we didn't want to put. Anybody's health at risk. So we did make that tough decision, but I will tell you that the planning for Parker Days for 2021. Is definitely underway and with Kara's help as well as with Dean and Pay, you know, we're all planning for next year and looking for to do something. Huge and exciting and, and, and you know, give back to the people of Parker. So. As, as much as we're bummed out that we're not having it, as always, it's a, it's a great decision that we were able to. Hard tough decision, but other than Parker Days, a couple of things that Kara and the team have been doing is every Friday. We've been doing Zoom meetings with, with the Chamber members. So we've covered everything from the PPP loans to marketing to computer. Security. Last week we had, we had Jeff on there, talk about reopening the town and shared a lot of behind the scenes stuff as to. What it takes to open up the town and all that good stuff. So we've put some Zoom meetings on that. Parker Young Professionals. Also have been having their Zoom meetings and then the Women's Forum has also been done virtually. So. The, the neat thing is everybody's adjusting to, to the whole Zoom thing. So you know, special kudos to Kara's team for putting on those phenomenal. Events that, you know, all the Chamber members look forward to. So the other thing we're doing too is, you know, we've, we've been having, you know, on Friday when we had our call with. With Jeff, we've been, you know, working with him and kind of seeing, you know, what can we do to help support the members as well as the community to open up and. And get some more folks to come into the restaurants and help out with that and supporting that, that initiative as well. But then. Last thing we're kind of working on as well is, is crossing my fingers and, and I'm glad Kara's on here to keep me straight, but. Working hard and trying to figure out, you know, how do we get some wine walks in? So. In before the end of the, before obviously the end of the year and working hard and staying close and working closely with Councilman Tobor on. How do we make that happen? How do we get there? What does it look like? You know, is everything going on? It obviously will be. A different look for, for the wine blocks, but something that, you know, still brings in, you know, 700, 800, 900 people to downtown Rain Street and experience with downtown Parker is so. Other than that, Kara, unless I'm missing anything, I'll see if there's anything we're missing.
You hit it out of the park. Thanks Omar.
Perfect. Well, thanks guys for everything for, that you guys have done, that you're doing for our community and, you know, going out there and doing, going above and beyond. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much Omar. Council, if you have any questions for Omar or Kara or Jeff, go ahead and hit your raise hand button. Right now and we'll take those. I don't see any. So Omar and Kara, thank you very much for the update. You guys are good. Let's go ahead and move on to the Downtown Business Alliance updates. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Great to see everyone, kind of. I see like four people on my screen right now, but great to be in front of you again. Over the past few months, the DBA has been really reaching out to our members to see what they need from us during that. And unprecedented time. We've been having our DBA meetings via Zoom. We started a downtownparker.com/virus page as a resource for both of our, our employers and employees. Since I know that our employers were in a tough spot as to what, what to tell their employees as far as where to get resources, how to manage money even. Where to get employment, you know, that kind of stuff. So we have all that there. We also did a couple of financial webinars. We thought that was the best thing we could do to help people. So we gathered. A group of experts on SBA loans, general financial strategies, the tax credits to try to take apart the CARE Act. I was working with landlords, mortgage forbearance, how does that work? Drive from your IRA, maybe borrowing from your 401k. All of that stuff. We even created cheat sheets that have step by step instructions for our employers that gave. For general COVID step by step instructions, but also specifically. For applying for the family leave tax credit, because I think a lot of people overlook that. So that's what we've been up to. What we're looking at right now, of course, the topic of the period here is reopening. So we're looking at ways to generate some buzz in downtown to help our restaurants serve more customers. And to that end, we're looking at closing down Main Street. So that's important to us and some form of that. And we're trying to figure out the details. Hopefully, at least on the weekend, some section of it, that kind of thing. So we're also looking at dying under the lights of events to have. So that's where we're at and that's our update for this month.
All right, Chris, thank you very much. Council, if you have any questions for Chris, go ahead and use your raise your hand feature so I can call on you. All right, it does not appear that we have any. So Chris, thanks a bunch, buddy. Appreciate it. Stay safe, wash your hands. All right, next item up is our public comments as been. Usual for the last meetings while we've been virtual, those public comments, if we receive any will have been emailed to council directly for you guys to see. We do not have any attendees at the moment, so it's just who you see right now. So let's go through. And do reports, items and comments from Mayor and Council as usual. I'll go through the list. From my normal right and go along. So each of you, as I call your name, go ahead and unmute and. Give us all an update if you have one or let us know if you don't. So we'll start with Josh Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit busy with the business, not a lot of town stuff. Appreciated DBA meeting and obviously. The Chamber Retail Business Meeting on the Friday call in was, was very good. Just running around trying to reopen businesses and. Make sure everybody's doing okay and get my staff back to work. So I've been kind of busy there, sir.
Excellent. Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. Cheryl, you're up.
Yes, I've got a couple of items. One is Douglas County Housing Authority. Castle Pines would like to join and become a member of that authority. And at the same time, the authority wants to update its IGA. So I believe that has already been forwarded to the city or town attorney. For review. We'll be waiting for each of the municipalities that are participating in the county to have their legal staff review the documents that are proposed. The other item is the Greater Parker Foundation. We had our first meeting since I've been involved with that entity and. We are going to be looking at goals. What do we really want to do? And then the other thing is needs. What are the things that we as a community need? And at this point, I believe staff under Jim Cleveland are going to be looking at other staff members. And various departments to see what their needs and goals might be.
Okay, anything else, Cheryl?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to Jeff Tobor.
It has been a busy, busy two weeks and I just want to say especially thank you to Omar and Kara from the Chamber as well as Chris. From DBA for all your hard work and your efforts as we start to reopen, but certainly making sure. Businesses know what's going on, they have the support they need, et cetera. So I had the DBA monthly meeting. Couple of weeks ago, fantastic. I had the Chamber Board Meeting last week. As well as presenting on their weekly Zoom meeting about opening back up Parker on Friday. I thought it was. Fantastic. A lot of good engagement and a lot of people very appreciative of what this council did in terms of opening up patios. I think there's a, a request brewing out there, as you might have heard, for a little bit more in terms of re-energizing Main Street and figuring that out. But we'll, we'll work through that. But again, thanks to those three individuals for what you're doing to support our town. We also had, along with Councilmember Dyak, had our Police Department Liaison Meeting, I believe, last week. Maybe a week ago. It's all running together now, but you know, got an update from the chief. Thanks so much for all that you and your team are doing to keep us safe. Especially, you know, this week, I want to say especially thanks to the Police Department for what you're going through, what your brothers and sisters are going through and. Please know that we stand behind you 100% with anything you need. And lastly, as Councilwoman Pogue spoke, we attended the Greater Parker Foundation. A lot of good changes there, I think in terms of, you know, taking the right steps to identify programs, identify needs, where those resources are and get them aligned. So. It has been a very, very busy two weeks.
Okay, thanks Jeff. All right, next up we've got Renee.
So I've been continuing to serve on the High Needs Work Group with Douglas County. And last Friday, we had a town hall that was specifically for. Are geared towards individuals that are elderly and there were over 4,000 attendees at that town hall and excellent participation. So we plan on having another one of those in the very near future. That's what I've been doing. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Renee. Let's go ahead and go to Debbie.
Last Tuesday, the scientific, cultural and scientific committee was supposed to meet, but of course. We were at Town Council. So Councilmember Dyak and I were absent from that meeting. We sent our well wishes. And we'll get a report from that. And I believe this Wednesday, Renee and I have a. Liaison meeting with the, with, with P3.
Okay, Debbie, thank you very much. John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the main things was the weekly COVID call. This week's call with the county. Focused on second wave and can, can we Douglas County and Tri-County and Parker create a plan? If and when a second wave comes to ensure we won't get shut down. So the discussion was about testing, tracking and tracing. We also got word that the library is targeting a late June physical opening. So that's good news. And there are a multitude of variances in the hopper that the county is working on for pools, playgrounds, theaters, bowling alleys, social events centers, the fair, graduation ceremonies and team sports. So. With all of that, we're trying to reopen the county as best as we can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John, very much. From my standpoint, biggest updates have been through Metro Mayor's Caucus, meet, we, our weekly meetings, our. Our bimonthly in-person meeting has been canceled in lieu of our weekly meetings. The weekly meetings have actually been very, very, very helpful, finding out from other citizens or other mayors, what's going on with their citizens. Through Metro Mayor's Caucus, I was able to secure a grant for us to receive 4,800 masks and to be distributed as we saw fit. And the staff has put together a program where businesses who want to offer masks to their customers or their employees could. Submit their interest for that. And I do believe, I think almost all the masks, if not all of them, have been allocated and utilized. So it's a pretty good thing. No cost to the. Citizens of Parker. It was a grant program of, I think they wanted to have a million masks distributed. And I know this council is, and, and I very much agree with the fact that we will not be mandating masks, but I think council also agrees that. Leaving those choices up to the individual businesses, the freedom for them to choose at what security level they want to provide. Is just a nice way to help them not have to make those expenses. So there's that. And then the other one that staff is looking into right now. Is there's been some disparity between municipalities like Parker that have relaxed our regulations for our liquor license holders in terms of being able to serve on patios. Which is a great thing that we've done. But the state has been dragging their feet somewhat and, and not been necessarily as helpful. So Metro Mayors were working on. Ways to alleviate some of those issues. So just like the rest of you guys, I think we're going to need a point where we will never have, where we don't want to ever see a Zoom meeting ever again. For the rest of our lives. And I wouldn't say that would be totally fine. So. That's what I've got going on. So let's go ahead and move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine. It will be enacted with one motion and one vote. Unless a council member asks to have something removed or else the mayor does as well. We do have one item on the consent agenda that we have a council member that has a declared conflict of interest for. That's item number C. So Council, before we go on to that, I would like to have a motion from one of you to remove consent agenda item 6C from the consent agenda to be voted on independently.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, Rivero.
Second.
Second Renee.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from John. All in favor, say aye. Please unmute and say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So Council, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B and D. Or items A, B and D on the consent agenda.
So moved, Rivero.
Second Debbie.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. Council, all in favor, please unmute and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Unmute and saying nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. So for the record, Councilmember Pogue has a declared conflict of interest and is disqualified from participating. In any matter before the town concerning residential metropolitan districts, which includes consent agenda item 6C. So that is on the record. So Councilmember Pogue, I'm going to ask that you mute yourself and turn your camera off. Or just click the, the stop video button for a sec and then we're going to have you come back on in just a sec. All right, with that, Council, I will need a motion to approve consent agenda item 6C.
So moved, Rivero.
Second Debbie.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes with five yeses and with Cheryl being recused from that vote. So Cheryl, you can go ahead and turn your camera back on. And unmute yourself. Or actually keep yourself muted until it's time, just like everybody else. So we're going to go ahead and move on to ordinances. And I don't have my glasses with me, so I apologize that I gotta hold this close to my face now. So next item up is item 7A. This is ordinance number 1.545 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance stating the intent of the Town of Parker to acquire temporary construction easements for the purpose of constructing. And improving Cottonwood Drive, a town roadway through the utilization of the town's power of eminent domain. And directing the town staff and town attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the above stated intent of the town and therefore to comply with all pertinent provisions. Of CRS 38-1-101. At relating to good faith negotiations. And Chris, I think you're going to lead us through this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That is correct.
All right, rock and roll.
Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background. This is an intent to acquire for the Cottonwood Drive widening project between Jordan Road and Parker Road. Original bridge was built in the 1980s, the two lanes that are out there today over Cherry Creek. We've continued to see growth and the time has come that we have to widen this road. The, what was originally planned in the 1980s to be a four lane road. And that's what we're going to be looking to do. We hope to start construction in the second half of 2020. And this project is going to require some temporary construction easements. They're temporary in nature because we don't have any permanent improvements. That are outside of right of way or current easements that we have today. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background, back up one slide, please. Back on. People 20th Town Council approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Cottonwood Metropolitan District for the proposed Cottonwood Drive and project. They actually had some, a commitment to, to convey some temporary construction easements for that IGA. And we also had a requirement that we would replace a privacy fence on the south side of Cottonwood Drive between Cherry Creek and Cottonwood Way. This fence replacement will affect 10 residential lots within the Cottonwood filing two subdivisions, south side of Cottonwood Drive between Cottonwood Way and Cherry Creek. And again, we need to get 10 tent break construction easements to be able to do that work. Next slide, please. We've identified a total of 15 temporary construction easement areas that need to be, that are needed to complete the Cottonwood Drive project. 10 of those easement areas are for the fence. These total, a total of about 3,000, approximately 3,000 square feet in area. The remaining five temporary construction easements are needed for construction of adjacent public sidewalk. Or completing work on private roadways or property. We have some over, we have a, for example. Apache Plume Drive, south of Jordan, south of Cottonwood Drive is a private road. We have to get an easement to work on that. If it was public right of way, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Again, there's no permanent public improvements in the areas and temporary construction easements are for a fixed time duration and terminate the end of the time established for the document. Our standard temporary construction easement is for a one-year duration with up to a six-month. Extension for, so a total of up to 18 months. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map that's in the IGA. In it, you can see where the widening is going from Jordan Road to Cottonwood Way. And then we're doing some intersection geometry improvements up to the Parker Road intersection further to the east. Next slide, please. This is an overview map of the areas where we, in the areas in yellow are noted as the areas we need to get temporary construction easements. The middle of the project is actually, everything's addressed with the Cottonwood Metropolitan District IGA that was approved back in April. Next slide, please. This is showing the west limits and in this area, we have to get a temporary construction easement. Along the, the properties there on the south to be able to make to the improvements. Next slide, please. This is on the eastern limits of the project. And again, you see the 10 lots that are there that we need to get. The residential lots are on the south side. They're, they have an address off of Prickly Pear Circle. That we need to get an address, temporary construction easements to build the fence. Then we have a remaining three lots there that are commercial in nature. Further to the east up to Parker Road. Next slide, please. Again, we've identified these 15 areas we have to get temporary construction easements. With this ordinance, we're going to engage in good faith negotiations. We have a consultant that we've actually will be engaging that has done a lot of acquisitions. For the town. And again, 10 for the temporary construction easements. The value of these easements is the construction, the replacement privacy fence. Then we have five additional temporary construction easement areas. We will offer. The value of the easement. But we're optimistic that some of the property owners out there may be willing to give us the easements. For example, the new gas station that was built at King Supers. That we, we actually deferred the sidewalk improvement to the road project and we're optimistic that hopefully that they will give us the easement at no cost to the town. Next slide, please. And in summary, town staff and our consultants will engage in good faith negotiations for these needed temporary construction easements. Any potential eminent domain, we will be coming back to Mayor and Council and talking before we go there. I'm optimistic that. That the property owners will be in favor of this project. And. This, we will not have to go into eminent domain. I'm, I'm, I'm fairly, I'm very hopeful that'll be the case. And an ordinance is required to approve this intent to acquire. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Chris, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Council, if you have any questions, please use the raise hand feature. All right, Cheryl, go ahead.
Chris, thank you. I just had a question. I may have missed it in prior documentation. Who is going to assume maintenance of that fence long-term?
The IGA that was agreed to back in April, it's the property owners. So I did. The, the property owners would actually maintain that fence today because the Cottonwood Metropolitan District does not. We're just replacing it and then ultimately the fence is still the owner, the property owners. And that's called out specifically in the IGA.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then Cheryl, go ahead and lower your hand and Josh, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Chris, if you could, please, just for the record and for Facebook world, explain temporary construction easement. What is it we're actually doing and using that property for? And where does that property ultimately end up?
So a temporary construction easement, nothing is ever recorded. For, for lack of a better word, we're renting the property to make the improvements. On the eastern end of the project, the temporary construction easements are needed to build the sidewalk of butts to the edge of the right of way. So we need a little bit additional area to get in there and put the forms in and for people to work. And at the end of the, the duration of the easement, they. For lack of a better word, the agreement vaporizes like Get Smart. Back in the day and they just go away. They're, they're not permanent. They're not recorded. We're just renting the property for a fixed duration of time so we can make our improvements that are adjacent to it. And then we're gone and the property still remains in the original ownership.
Okay. Other questions, Council? Use the raise hand feature. Okay, it does not look like we have any. Now we have three attendees who are watching the meeting. We have. Phone number 7203411878. We have Kara Massa and we have someone named Tim. If either of you, it's the time for public comments. We'll open it up at, for 7:25 for public comment. And Danette, let's see here, we'll go ahead and start with the call in. If you have public comment, there's a six, there is a, excuse me, a three-minute time limit. On public comment and I will let you know when we get close to the end. So we've got a call in. If you'd like to have public comment, this is your time. State your name and address for the record, please. Okay, and does not look like our call in. So let's go ahead and mute our call in and then go ahead and unmute Tim. Do you have, Tim, if you have public comment, this is your time. State your name and address. Let's see here. Danette, can we unmute Tim? There we go. Tim, if you have public comment, this is your time. So state your name and address for the record, please. And does not look like Tim has public or anything to say on that. So we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:26 PM. Council, I will entertain any further discussion or emotion, please.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1.545 on second reading. This is John Dyak.
Second Debbie.
Okay, we have a motion from John and a second from Debbie. I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote on this. So we'll start with Josh Rivero.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Debbie.
Aye.
John.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on our agenda is item 7B. This is ordinance number 5.06.40.1 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend section 8.07.110 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning sitting or lying down in the public right of way. Jamie, with the blue background, you are going to rock and roll for us. It's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. We are seeking Town Council approval on the modifications to ordinance number 8.07.110. The modifications are rather minor. It is mainly to clarify the ordinance itself. In section A, we are taking out the undefined term of high-traffic areas. And adding on collector and arterial roadways, which is defined in the Town of Parker Roadway Design and Construction Criteria Manual, which has been adopted by the Parker Municipal Code. In section B, we are taking out time limits and just adding in the clarification that individuals who are interfering with the safe and free passage. A pedestrian, bicyclist or vehicle on a public right-of-way shall be determined unlawful. Under public right-of-way, we are taking out the zoning information on the definition. As it just wasn't relevant to this section. And other than that, we are not making any additional changes. Therefore, for purposes of clarifying this ordinance, we are asking for approval. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Council, looks like we've got Councilmember Pogue first and then Josh Rivero second for questions.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, your hands up. So go ahead and do, thank you. Josh, you're next.
Hi Jamie, thank you. I apologize. I should have brought this up earlier. The, the part in the legislative findings where we identify interfering, blocking or obstructing and then unlawful definitions, we just. um, interfering, blocking or obstructing and then unlawful definitions, we just use interfering. Did we look at that? Did we decide against that?
We looked at it after it had gone up for first reading. Um, I do believe that interference itself does also include blocking and obstructing anything that would impact the free transportation, the free moving along the right of way, I think is an unlawful violation. So it, I think the term encompasses all three.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, other questions, council? If you do, raise use your raise a hand feature. Okay, and I'm not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. I'm going to open public comment at seven thirty PM. We have four people in our attendee list. We've got uh, call in from eighteen seventy eight. We've got Christopher Schnell, Omar Castillo and Tim. So our call in, if you would like to, if you have something for public comment, same rules as before. Three minute time limit. You'll need to state your name and address for the record, please. And you're set to go if you'd like.
Hi, this is Laura Hesta. I'm one eight two three six Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado. Eight oh one three four. I'm just curious on the ordinance. Did you mention a fine and what the um, violation would be classified as legally?
Okay, go ahead and ask all your questions and then we'll answer them after we're done. So it can maximize your time, Laura.
Okay, um, that's all I have right now. Just the uh, the ordinance number. What type of violation it would be classified as? Um, and what's the sign or penalty for obstructing traffic in the middle of the street by laying your body down on the ground or um, any other type of obstruction of traffic. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Laura. Let's go ahead and we'll go through all the public comment questions, Jamie, so that you can answer them all at once.
Okay.
Um, so let's move on to Tim. Tim, if you have a question, let's go ahead and unmute Tim if we could. And Tim, if you have a question, please state your full name and address for the record, please. And it does not look like Tim has one because he looks like he's self muted. So we're going to go and move on to Christopher Schnell. Chris, Chris, if you have a question or a comment for public comment, go ahead and state your full name and address for the record, please. And it looks like Chris self muted as well. So we'll go ahead and close public comment at seven thirty two. And Jamie, if you could address Laura's question about what type of violation and what the fines would be.
Miss Hefter, this is a municipal violation which would fall in our municipal courts. The fines are generally four hundred and ninety nine dollars for an unlawful uh, firm finding by the court. So I can confirm that, but I believe it's a four hundred and ninety nine dollar fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Jamie. All right, council. So with that, um, I would entertain further discussion or a motion on this item, please. If you have further discussion, use the raise your hand feature. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five point zero six point four zero point one on second reading.
Oh, second.
Second is. We have a motion from Josh and a second from Cheryl. We'll do a roll call vote as well. So we'll start with Josh.
All right.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Renee.
Hi.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item seven C. All right. I'm gonna really have tough with this one with I have very little light in my sitting room up here and not having my glasses on makes this tough. All right, here we go. This is uh, item C administrative code and fees. There's three different items in this one and uh, we're gonna have one presentation, but there will need to be three different motions. So first off is C one. This is ordinance number four dot eight nine dot six on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend sections eleven dot zero one dot zero three zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Parker Administrative Code. C two is ordinance number three dot zero one dot one two two on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend sections thirteen, section thirteen dot zero one dot zero eight zero of the Parker Municipal Code concerning fee to be established by council resolution. And item number C three is resolution number twenty dash zero two eight. This is a resolution to adopt the development related user fee schedule administrative code fee schedule effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Now, Randy, you are going to be the leader of this per, uh, am I correct?
He's not.
He's not. Who's good? Who's who's gonna be the leader of this? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Danette. I totally, I looked down. I just saw Randy's name at the bottom. Yeah, Danette, you're gonna lead us. Go for it.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I begin the presentation, I just wanted to remind you um, of the differences between the user fee study and the impact fee study and the paying for growth policy document. We hired Tischler Bice to do all three to help us look at our development related um, cost and how to pay for those. Um, the impact fee, of course, was um, transferred to the excise tax um, in the last election in November. And so the user fee study is a little bit different in that um, it does not require um, it does not require an ordinance. We can adopt this by resolution. And so with that, I'll get started. I'm just going to go through the background of the user fee study. Um, the methodology, the comparables, cost recovery, and then um, the reason for our item tonight. Um, the proposed ordinance is in resolution. So um, for user fees, um, it's a typical best practice in municipal government to conduct a comprehensive user fee study every five to seven years. And then to also review fees every one or two years um, to adjust them if necessary. So it's been a little bit over, it's been over 10 years since we've conducted such a study. And with that, we engaged Tischler Bice to conduct a comprehensive user fee study. The results of that study were presented to the Maryland County Council on during the retreat in January on the thirty first. We also um, presented the the study and uh, gave a presentation to the developer liaison committee in April. And then we presented the fees to the planning commission on May twenty eighth. And then like we said, the fees will be effective on the fifteenth. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of the purpose of this study. Um, when we're looking at um, fees and taxes, what we're trying to determine is what percentage of fees or what percentage of a service should be paid by taxes versus what should be paid by fees? Or which should be taxed subsidized? And if a service is a pure public service, police is a great example. If you pay more taxes, you don't necessarily get more police service. And then if you go down the spectrum, you'll see that um, for those items or those services that benefit only the individual. For those fees, um, that's when we typically would pay one hundred percent or we would charge one hundred percent in fees and not have um, taxes subsidized that particular service. User fees are a little bit different in that, um, you know, sometimes as policy decisions, there might be a need to adjust those fees and, you know, perhaps not pay, or excuse me, not charge the one hundred percent cost recovery. So the methodology, when we went through the study, Tischler Bice looked at the direct department cost. They looked at the department overhead and then centralized overhead. For the direct department costs, they looked at the actual time spent on each application type. Um, so this was a very tedious process and they looked at every single department and um, employee who touched a particular task and that's how the fees that are in the fee study were derived. So when we, um, in addition to looking at the one hundred percent cost recovery, we also wanted to determine where Parker um, where we were with our fee structure compared to other communities in our neighboring area. And what we found is that um, the current Parker fees were significantly lower than the peer community. Um, now, you know, we have in this study, we have Aurora, Castle Pines, Castle Rock, um, Lone Tree. So this, uh, you know, gives you that broad comparison. One thing to keep in mind is this isn't comparing apples to apples, but we did want to take a look to make sure that when we derived our one hundred percent cost recovery, that um, we've looked at what the uh, market was doing as well and using those two indicators. So um, once again, this analysis was looking at, we needed to start that baseline to find out what does it cost us to provide the service to help make business decisions and policy decisions. And so there are some categories where we um, staff recommended that we adopt fees at a lower than cost recovery in some categories. And that's because we didn't want to be so far out of alignment with um, our neighboring communities. So in order to set those fees, what we also looked at is um, what is, where does our hundred percent cost recovery fall on that continuum with their peer communities and where does fifty percent cost recovery? So this shows you, um, the red diamonds are the current Parker fee. The fifty percent cost recovery, the green circles and the purple triangles are the one hundred percent cost recovery. So this just gives you that visual representation of where Parker was and then where our study came in with those cost recovery levels. So when a couple of other things that we did when we were looking at our fees is in engineering, they had typically um, had a chargeback methodology, excuse me, a chargeback um, structure for fees. And what this, what happened was um, the developer community came to Parker um, on several occasions and said that they had difficulty trying to determine what their future costs would be. Because we were charging on that, um, you know, like um, charging them and invoicing them with a chargeback instead of a flat fee. So we used the study methodology and and have uh, proposed the flat fees for all engineering tasks. Um, we've also looking in comparison to um, other municipalities and their valuations for building fees. Once again, Parker was significantly lower. And so what we did is we brought those up to the market. For the planning cost, um, that's where, those are the um, charts that I showed you before. And the planning costs, we decided based on um, anywhere from a fifty percent to a hundred percent. Making sure that we would not be too far out of alignment with other communities. We also added in legal review fees and an annual increase of fees based on the construct, construction cost index. And that's just going to help us so that we don't have to go through this process. Uh, you know, every, but every couple of years. Well, actually, a comprehensive user fee study would be every five to seven years. And then automatically um, increasing by CCI every year. And this would ha occur at the, at budget time. Um, so the planning fees that I have mentioned, the staff recommendation is the um, diamond, the yellow diamond. And you can see there are a couple where um, you know, we have decided based on certain criteria that um, you know, we did need to be a little bit higher only because it takes us a little bit more time. Um, you know, to spend or we have, uh, you know, we have significant effort put into those particular application types. So this evening, what we are asking is that you adopt ordinance four point eight nine. And this um, adopts the twenty twenty edition of the Parker Administrative Code. And another thing that we did is we moved the fees from section three oh four of the administrative code to the resolution. Um, we've also, we're also asking that you approve ordinance three dot zero one dot one two two. And this establishes a fee schedule to be set by ru resolution, which is another municipal best practice. So what we would be doing here is just instead of having all of these fees in code, it will be a lot easier to make these adjustments every year. We will adopt them with the budget every year. And then when we do a comprehensive study, it'll be a lot easier administratively to do that as well. One, um, so the actual resolution, um, it does, you know, as I mentioned, it sets fees by resolution. And it increases the fees um, to offset the town's cost of operations and inflation. And that um, information or that those dollar amounts were derived from the study and from the um, the neighboring jurisdiction comparables. And um, there is one item, there were two um, changes from your packet. So you have a fee schedule in your packet. It's listed as exhibit one. And um, the first change is we removed um, two site plan fees. And then we also um, added a um, variance fee for two hundred and fifty dollars. Those were just things, items that we missed um, in the final presentation. Um, so we would ask you to approve resolution number two zero dash zero two eight with the amended fee schedule as presented. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, Danette. Thank you very much for your thorough presentation, council. Do you have, if you have any questions for Danette? Uh, please raise your hand. We've got Jeff Tobor.
Good evening, Danette. Hey, can you go back to the April Development Liaison Committee meeting? And talk about who was there, what the feel of this was, what the recommendations coming out of that group was in terms of hundred percent, fifty percent, or a phased in approach?
Sure. Um, you know, that um, the developer, we um, the developer liaison committee, it was very well attended. Um, I'm actually going to ask Tom Williams to assist me um, with the specific um, guest.
Yes, Diane, are you there?
Yeah.
Danette?
Yes. I see you, Tom.
Okay, so um, the Development Liaison Committee is primarily made up of developers that are within the Parker area as well as engineering consultants and planners. Um, the two major property owners um, that have left to develop their property in town being the Hess Ranch and Anthology North properties um, are represented on the Development Liaison Committee by representatives, including Larry Jacobson. Um, we also have Matt Osborne as well as we have um, representatives from Anthology North being Chris Ellett and Matt Jenke um, and their consultant. So pretty well represented, representation of the developers within the Parker area as well as the um, project partners that they have as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Tom. And then, Danette, in terms of a phased in or a or a big bang, did, was there any discussion about that?
Yes, um, we, we did present to them. Um, so when we identified the one hundred percent cost recovery and then our target fees, we decided to phase in the fees over two years. So in twenty twenty, um, the fees will be structured at half of the target. And then in twenty twenty one, we will bring those up to our target, whether that be a fifty percent or a hundred percent. And that's for the planning division fees. Um, and we did present this to the Development Liaison Committee. Um, there were, it seemed to have been, um, you know, very well received. We didn't have any questions. Uh, after the meeting, we didn't have any questions following up either. So um, we do believe that it was well received.
Great.
Okay. Jeff, anything else? Are you, you good? Okay, uh, we've got Josh Rivero up next. Jeff, go ahead and, there you go. Perfect. Josh, you're up.
Yep, I'm sorry. Just a clarification before the vote. Um, Danette's presentation referred to ordinance uh, four point eight nine flat. Um, executive summary report refers to four point eight nine point five. You had agenda and the suggested motions are four point eight nine point six. So I'm assuming point six is what we're after today, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Josh, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions from council? Okay, see none. Go ahead and mute yourself, Josh, if you don't mind. Um, let's go ahead and I will open up public comment at seven forty eight PM on these three items. Um, let's go ahead and start off with uh, Tim, if you have any uh, public comment on these items. Oh, you just muted yourself, so I'm gonna take that as a no. So let's go ahead and move on to Laura. Laura, if you have any i, uh, comment on this, go ahead and state your name and address again. I know it's redundant, but we gotta do it for each, each item and uh, you'll have your three minute time limit.
Okay, this is Laura Hefter again at um, one eight two three six Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado. I'm looking at your fee schedule right now on the internet. Um, and I just wanted to know, I see uh, most of the fees are for different types of development. Um, you know, fee, user fees uh, encompass a wide area of matters. Um, do you include um, in that uh, facility fees for say the parks and recreation? Do you include in that facility fees for, say, the parks and recreation, or other such fees, or is this just centered on more of town development and whatnot?
Okay, so we'll mark that.
And are you going to? Okay, and then also, I would assume that you're going to update your document fee schedule for the public as well. Just wanted to ensure that, that as this is being updated, that as you were implementing, this is also going to be updated for the public to see as well. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I know we're waiting for all the questions before Danette to answer it, but I can, Laura, in that case, yes, anything that's posted, or anything that's passed by council is immediately updated for public. Nothing is kept behind the scenes. The town is absolutely transparent to everybody, so everything is updated as soon as it is approved, or if something is approved for our citizens. So, let's see here, we've got Christopher Schnell. Chris, did you have a question as well for public comment? No, does not look, okay. We're going to go ahead and close public comment at 7:50 PM, and I would entertain further, or actually, I'm sorry, before we go to that, we do have a question from Laura. So, Danette, if you could, see, are you, if you could talk about the, the fees, or the fees that are included with, from Laura's question there, I wrote it down as well, but I think you did as well.
Yes, I did. Thank you for your question, Laura. We, this just focused on development-related fees, so there are some building permit fees and right-of-way permitting fees, planning fees, and building divisions fees. The parks and recreation fees that you see in the schedule, those are only for those development-related tasks. So, those would be when our Parks Department reviews plan sets for, you know, for a new subdivision, a park within a new subdivision, maybe a pocket park. The fees for which you're referencing are not included in this, and they can be found at the individual department websites.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, counsel, I would entertain further discussion, or we have three different items, so we would need three different motions on these. If you have a discussion, go ahead and raise your hand. Otherwise, I would entertain motions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number...
Actually, hold on, Josh. Cheryl raised her hand. So, Cheryl, what's your question, what's your discussion item?
I think maybe Laura's question needs a little further explanation. She asked about paying for other, like, recreational facilities. So, you've got the play that's involved here, I believe, is also part of the impact, or excise tax. Do you want to go into that, Danette?
I'm sorry, Cheryl, can you elaborate or clarify your question?
There are fees for recreational facilities and things like that, and I believe that's covered under our excise tax that we charge. Can you cover that?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yeah, so the user fee studies, those are the fees that are, that the developers pay, and they, you know, the developers typically derive that benefit. The facility fees, so the excise tax, we did an impact fee study, and the results from that impact fee study, we used those dollar amounts and translated those to excise tax. So, developers do pay for those recreational facilities or municipal facilities. Say that we built a larger police station, that's how those are paid, but that's a, that's a separate, you know, that's a tax versus a fee, and those are covered within the excise tax. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for the clarification, Danette.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or entertain motions, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I move to approve ordinance number 4.89.6 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Debbie. I'll do a roll-call vote on this as well. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and we need a motion for the next item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 3.01.11122 on second reading, sir.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Josh and a second from Cheryl. We'll go through roll-call vote. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. One more item on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 20-028 with the amended fee schedule as presented this evening.
Second, Rivera.
Okay, we have a motion by John and a second by Josh. Roll-call vote. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item up. All right, so I'm going to be doing a lot of reading here for a little bit of action for you guys, so sit, sit tight and be patient with me, but we've got a couple items that I'll need a motion to continue on. First item is 8A, which is Cherry Creek South Metropolitan Districts Number 10, and just for the record, I'll need a motion to continue these following items, which I'll read in in just a sec, from, they were continued from May 18th to tonight, but they were, they're, well, they're motioning to continue them to June 15, 2020, and this is for Resolution Number 20-020, which is a resolution to approve the First Amendment and Restated Service Plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10, and ordinance number 9.315 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10. So, I'll need a motion to continue to a date certain of June 15, 2020.
So, moved.
We have a motion from Debbie and a second from John. Roll-call vote. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Jim, do I need to read all these next ones, or can I just read the header? You got to unmute yourself there, and I hope you're saying I can just read the header.
You can just read the header.
No.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Okay, so counsel, I'll need a motion to continue item 8, which was continued from May 18th to tonight. I'll need a motion to continue it to a date certain of June 15, 2020, which is for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Numbers 4 through 9 and 11.
So, moved.
Motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Roll-call vote. Josh?
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and I do believe, with no further business before counsel, we will adjourn at 7:58 PM. Thank you to our three attendees, and to all of you, please go wash your hands, and have a good evening, y'all.